We'll call this meeting to order. The Orange County Board of Education pledges to its citizens to conduct its business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks its citizen to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards both school personnel and each other. As per Board policy, Robert's Rule of Order will be used to conduct the meeting. A moment of silence will be observed in each meeting. The Board asks that you check your cell phones and other electronic devices to be certain they are either turned off or on vibrate to avoid interrupting the meeting. With that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get started. Dr. Felder, recognitions tonight?
Wonderful, thank you. Chair Atherton, and good evening to you and to Vice Chair Purcell, to the entire Board, to all of our students, staff, families, and community members. We have a number of recognitions tonight. The first recognition is with regards to National Hispanic Heritage Month. So from September 15th to October 15th, by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America are observed as part of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And so the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, who was, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988, to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. So it was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988, on the approval of Public Law 100-402. So here in Orange County schools, our community engagement team, family liaisons and family outreach coordinators are planning opportunities for Hispanic students and families to engage with experts on important matters. Topics of exploration include education and scholarships, food and housing security, healthcare policy makers, and legal support, and Hispanic pride. This year, an event which has customarily been offered for elementary school students and families will expand in October to include all grades at a new location, Cedar Ridge High School. So stay tuned to our website and messages from our schools to learn more about the exciting events coming up as we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month. Next, please. Thank you. And so the arts are an essential part of a complete education, no matter if it happens in the home, school, or the community. Students of all ages, from kindergarten to college to creative aging programs, benefit from artistic living, innovative thinking, and creativity. Celebrating National Arts and Education Week is a way for us to recognize this impact and share the message with friends, family, and communities, as we are grateful for all 32 of our art teachers in Orange County schools. That would be in the visual arts, music, band, chorus, and theater. We know that art has the power to not only engage each and every child, but it can also transform their experience of school. Through the arts, every child has a unique opportunity to explore the world and to express themselves through artistic creation. We are so proud to recognize all of our art teachers, their students, and offer a word of thanks to Shannon Braxton, our Director of Arts and Career and Technical Education, who consistently and passionately supports and promotes arts programs in all of our schools. National Arts and Education Week is a national celebration, recognizing the transformative power of the arts in education passed by Congress in 2010 through House Resolution 275. The celebration is designed to bring attention to this cause for the elected officials and educational decision-makers across the country, and to support equitable access to the arts for all children. National Arts and Education Week takes place annually during the week beginning the second Sunday of September. So this year, it falls on September 11th through the 17th, and we look forward to hearing, seeing, and experiencing the fruits of these creative art programs all year long. All right, and so the next item is also a recognition and an announcement. And so the annual, the annual college fair, an annual college fair is approaching very soon. It is the Carolinas Association of Collegiate Registars and Admissions Officers. It's a professional organization dedicated to promoting post-secondary education for students in North Carolina and South Carolina. And we see the benefits of their work every year during the annual college fair. This year, the fair is being held on Tuesday, September 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Orange High School. So again, Tuesday, September 13th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Orange High School. All high school students at Orange High School, Cedar Ridge High School, and Partnership Academy are welcomed and encouraged to attend this event. Students registering for this event is important, and here's why. When you register for a barcode before the fair at www.strieffair.com, you will receive your own unique barcode for the college fair, again on Tuesday, September 13th. And then during the fair, you'll show your barcode to colleges, who will scan it and send you more information about their schools. So no more stopping to fill out one slip of paper after another. And so the day after the fair, students will receive a report with information on the colleges with whom they scanned. It's just that easy. We encourage all students who are even thinking about college education and their future to register for this event, just like filling out the FAFSA, the free application for federal student aid. This is a fabulous opportunity to learn about the path forward, build new connections, and plan for making the best decision for your future. For any of our students who may be on the college-going path, this is a free and risk-free way to begin researching and making contact with potential colleges and universities to attend following graduation. So we thank this organization and to all of our high school student services team for helping to make this opportunity available for our students. And so, Mr. Atherton, that concludes the recognitions and announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Felder.
Sure.
With that, our next item is the Addenda Adoption. There are several items for that motion. One is to remove the strategic plan till the next meeting and minutes. And the other item is to move the summer update to right after the consent agenda to allow staff to leave early. So do we have a motion?
Still moved. Second?
All in favor? I. Dr. Moore?
Hi.
Thank you. All right, with that, that brings us to public comments. We have a few people signed up tonight. Who's our first?
Stuart Horn. You will come to the podium.
I'd like to say this is one of my first meetings I've visited here in the Hillsborough school system. At this very point right here is where I used to sit in the band and play for Mr. Haas. So this was where my junior high school was. I'm here on concerns of what I've heard throughout this past week. And it concerns with the, what happened at Stanford Junior High School with the awards and the awards that were there for the school and the band. And these awards by the band instructor was Mr. Moore, which we all considered is as good an instructor and citizen to this county as anyone. And what I'm worried about is future teachers that worked in this system here will not be looked at for their past accomplishments and the schools' accomplishments. And what happened here is there was a disregard for that. I understand the change came from the changing of the names of Cameron Park, which I knew as Miss Annie Cameron, Cameron Park. And if you don't know who Miss Annie Cameron is, go down to Episcopal Church on some Sundays. When you walk in church, her picture's on the wall. So take a little time and look at things like that. And go back and look at some of the other history of people like C.W. Stanford. Look what happened in that tenure when he was on the school board. A lot was accomplished during troubled times. But besides that, the other issues I look at here is that when something of this nature happens in a school, in which I'm here on part for my, my children, which played in the band. My son was on the sports there. He was, they were the conference champions two years in a row. And all that stuff is gone, or we don't know exactly. And that's what I would like to find out, where it's at. Can we get it back in, at the school? Get all the banners up that was there? Because that, that's part of that school history. And that was part of those teachers that were there during that time that should be representative and should be looked at with a little bit more thoughtful regards to who they were. And to me, Mr. Moore was on top of my list. If this is going to happen further down the road, I want to make sure at Orange High School, if this happens there, let me know ahead of time. Because my son's picture and his accomplishments is in that reward, that awards case. And I definitely want to get them back. But really, it's not, none of that is mine. None of that is yours. That's, that's county property. That was all county property. That has to go through you for something like that to happen. So we need to make sure that we're not doing knee-jerk decisions here that influences everything we do and everything we say. It falls back to the children that are in school now. And if you, I'm not a Facebook person, Facebook person, but what I'm hearing this week, it has been, that's all you hear on it, what people have been calling me about. So I'm here as a concerned Orange County citizen, a parent, and a grandparent that's got a grandson that's going to be going to school there next year. So I want to make sure we're doing things right. And right now, it doesn't look like everything is right. So that is my concern today, and I'm hoping that you'll take time and look at this, think through it, and try to get it resolved where people are happy.
Mr. Stone. I'm sorry, Mr. Horn, your time is up. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Walker?
I'm a former coach, and I'm still coaching. Of course, now I'm in East Chapel Hill, but, you know, tennis coaches, if you can drive a bus and don't wreck them, they hire you. But anyway, I was a teacher at Stanford from '82 to '87, also a coach at Orange and Chapel Hill and a number of places. I had five years at Stanford, and they were some of the best moments I had as far as teaching and coaching. The kids got along wonderfully there. We had so many different activities and athletics. Coached the football team one year with 73 kids, black, white. Our captain was a Vietnamese kid, Ty Mitchell. Remember the boat kids? So the kids there had a really good sense of togetherness because they had been going to school for 10 or 12 years together, okay? And Stuart, who I know from my high school football days, he, Caleb Moore's office was right beside mine. And at the beginning of the year, the band sounded like cat scratching, but by the end of the year, those kids could do a Glenn Miller rendition on the Ed Sullivan Show. He was a fantastic band director. And with that being said, in the athletic part, we had a number of great men and women who worked for Stanford. One comes to mind is Richard Lyons, who come from the old Central High School, because Stanford and Orange in the late '60s, the first integration. Richard coached basketball, baseball, athletic director for like 20 years at Orange and Stanford. Ernie Price followed him for like 15 years. These are men that this was their legacy. Richard Sherrill, football, basketball, track, 20 years. When he found this out, he was a little bit upset. The late Lou Gehry. If you ask around town about these people, everybody knows them. Aaron Carr, who was an excellent wrestling and football guy. Denise Wilson did a lot of softball, and Julie Carnes was an athletic director for a number of years. These are the people, that was, that was their legacy. And I understand that you can't keep every trophy in there, but when I saw it, it was, it was kind of disheartening, because I had some other pictures they might want to put in there, but it wasn't there. And I just think something needs to be done to remember those days, because, you know, Orange County is a special place for a lot of people. And, you know, I know things change and stuff like that, but we need to keep those people in mind, and the students, and everything they've done, and, and keep some semblance of that. With that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, nervous, okay. Good evening, esteemed members of the Board. My name is Hannah McCallum. I am the parent of an exceptional child at Hillsborough Elementary School. I came today to bring to your attention the current implementation of proposed House Bill 657 for school safety slash threat assessment teams. I have prepared packets for everyone that includes this proposed bill that was recently cited to me. House Bill 657 is an important step towards ensuring the safety of all students within the state of North Carolina. However, much of it relies on discretionary decisions with little guidance or accountability for schools, leaving our children with autism particularly vulnerable. According to the CDC, 1 in 52 children will be diagnosed with autism each year. When autistic children are overwhelmed and/or overstimulated, they have a meltdown. Autistic children, particularly those who are young, have little to no tools in their toolbox for communicating feelings of fear or anxiety. They react. Sometimes meltdowns can look like eloping. Sometimes they can look like threats towards themselves or others. It is the role of the Behavior Intervention Plan within the school to teach the replacement behavior. You will notice Page 6 of the bill has been highlighted. This says that the superintendent and local law enforcement should be informed of a child if there is imminent threat of serious violence. Without proper policies, documentation, and training, administration across the district could interpret this language to indiscriminately mean any child who communicates threats. It leaves arcade-through five children with documented targeted behaviors of threat communication particularly vulnerable. The problematic link between this proposed bill and children with Behavior Intervention Plans is a lack of district policy guiding its implementation. In its most organic format, House Bill 657 is an integral support. But as we know, children are not identical, and whose threat is referred to law enforcement can often be dependent on what implicit biases individuals have. Without proper district policy, the implementation of such guidelines will not be consistent across the intersection of race, gender, and disability. I am requesting policies be created so that clear structure, guidelines, and context can be provided for when school safety and threat assessment teams need to escalate a child's threat to law enforcement and when the Behavior Intervention Plan can be exclusively utilized. OCS is blessed with an outstanding Exceptional Children's Department and a really strong Equity Department as well. Seek their counsel in work to provide a more equitable implementation of this proposed bill. Families of disabled children navigate enough. We do not need to be worried about our children's autism being criminalized due to a maladaptive implementation of House Bill 657. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all got that paintbrush you, you used to paint C.W. Stanford in a bad way? You know, y'all had pleasure in dragging that good name through the mud. It's bad enough you took pleasure in it, and now you allowed him to be talked about horribly in a way in, in your boardroom, in a way you wouldn't allow any of you board members or administrators or principals, but you allowed his name to be talked about horribly here. You based it on assumption, not fact. It was just a witch hunt. You didn't ask what he did good, and you didn't ask about the truth. Didn't expect any of you to have the intestinal fortitude to answer. Hadn't yet, we've asked, but why? Make it worse by disrespecting the Orange County community, its taxpayers, its family, most importantly, its students. Why dishonor those students, those leaders who trained and inspired those teams, those bands that earned those awards and trophies? If you've never been part of a strong team, a strong band of the likes that Caleb Moore had, you won't get it. You won't understand why it means so much. Where? Where are they now? You've been investigating it. Superintendent, you should know where they went. It should have been a simple answer. We threw them in the dumpster. We packed them up in storage. They're in a closet. It shouldn't be that hard to answer. Where? Were they thrown in the dumpster? Were they disposed of, disposed of in the way that you're supposed to with state property? Taxpayers paid for it, but the students earned it, and that's who they belong to, even if they're not current students. Those leaders like Caleb Moore, like Richard Lyons, like Ms. Bernholz, who I had right here, make a difference for those students. But if they're going to be treated with disrespect, what? What are you gonna do about it? Accountability, disciplinary action, or is it just going to be another time it swept under the rug? What are you going to do about this disrespect, more importantly? If the trophies were thrown in the dumpster, they're gone. They're taken up roaming the landfill. But the disrespect toward the students, most importantly, but also its community. What are you teaching our children, showing disrespect? Are you wanting to send a message like many of us have felt that it didn't matter? Our efforts are, they mean nothing. You know, those awards, just throw them in the dumpster. They obviously didn't mean a lot, and what we did, did neither.
Ms. Mulkey, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Who? Who approved it? Who are you going to hold accountable? And who are you gonna make sure respects our kids?
How are y'all doing tonight? I came to talk with one purpose, but I wanted to mention something. I wanted to support these that have the concerns about those trophies. I'm a product of the Orange County school system myself, and I do have some of those trophies in some of those cases. Coach Walker back here can attest that they weren't for athletics, though. I was not the athletic type. But I do understand those concerns, and I think it's one of the things that needs to be looked at for long term, that this does not happen again, that it is respected and thought through, so we don't have this road to go down once again. The main reason I came to speak tonight is I'm the president of the Orange County Optimists Club, better known as the Hog Day Committee. We hope y'all will come to Hog Day this coming weekend. It is Friday and Saturday night. I believe a little bit further down in the agenda, if I'm reading it right, there's some discussion about events and usage. For those that aren't aware, those aren't aware here, we have had Hog Day for 39 years. And 37 of it, except for the two years we moved to Eflin, has been right downtown Hillsborough. We moved it to Eflin to incubate it for a couple of years, and then moved it back because the town and the mayor said, please come back to downtown Hillsborough. We're the oldest and largest festival here in Orange County, and this week, we found out from the North Carolina Barbecue Society, we are the oldest barbecue festival in North Carolina now. So we beat Lexington by one year, so take that. But we have been using your parking lot for our car show for all those 30 years. And I have, for the time I've been involved in, I used to run the Chamber of Commerce 20-some years ago. All it took for me was to call the school board and just say, guess what? And they went, okay. So that was what we had in the past, to be able to use that parking lot. The Kiwanis Club is the one actually doing the car show for us this year, raising funds to put back in the community. We have raised tens of thousands of dollars. The chamber decided they don't want to do the Hog Day anymore. We formed a nonprofit, the Optimists Club, and use those monies to go back to the children here. There are school group after school group after athletics, after bands, after all kinds of groups that raise, that are, raise money for their whole year during this festival. And we go in, raise all the money that we can, sell them barbecue and sponsorships, and we give it all away right back to the community. Keep a little bit of seed money for the next year, but we do that. So would love to come up with a long-term solution for y'all. We're willing to partner with y'all even a little bit more to go in and see if you want to have a booth in the heart of it. We've got great locations that people pay lots of money and sponsors to get visibility. All these things that you were talking about at the beginning of the meeting, you can go in and talk about those and share those with the community and get the kids involved. So would love to come up with a long-term solution and would love to have even a stronger partnership for y'all. So please consider and help us out. It's Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
That's all the people that have signed up to speak.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight to speak. We'll move into Board comments. We'll start with Stone.
With me? Okay.
Yes. Since y'all are sitting together.
Okay, can Bonnie go first? Because I think we were going to speak to something similar.
We were going to talk about the Capital Needs Work Group, but unless you want to first talk about some of the, that's fine. I just wanted to, I was going to talk about the Capital Needs Work Group. It's been going on for about a year. First, by thanking Commissioner Jean Hamilton for initiating the work group in partnership with both school districts and for our Board for allowing me to serve. It's been a very long time coming, and if you haven't, there is a short work group report that's attached to the agenda. report that's attached to the agenda that's really worth reading if you want to understand what's going on with our school facilities. I'm going to share some of that. I'm going to take a few minutes extra to share the highlights with you and the public. First, the work group confirmed that more than half of our schools, including Chapel Hill Carver Schools, are over 50 years old and in serious disrepair. It is likely to cost $500 million or more to upgrade and modernize 32 aging campuses and seven administrative offices. That's across both school districts. It's everything from learning spaces, building safety and infrastructure, and energy efficient construction. After meeting for nearly a year, the work group is recommending that the county retain an independent consultant to look at everything from the buildings themselves along with the processes for planning, construction, and maintenance of the buildings. The county is going to be asking both school boards to agree to go ahead with that plan. It's, I believe it's on our agenda for the 29th of September at the joint meeting. The idea is to get a fresh objective perspective from a consultant who has no vested interest in the outcome. In other words, we don't want to hire an architect or a contractor who might be tempted to tell us what we want to hear in hopes of getting a large design or construction contract. The goal is to give us, meaning both school districts and the county, the tools that we need to modernize our processes for planning, building, maintaining, and funding school buildings. We have the option to ask every, to ask the consultant to score every one of our campuses and buildings and to come up with something that we've, in the work group, called the Facilities Condition Index, it's the FCI, and that looks at the state of the building, and it looks at it in terms of the building itself, the backlog of repairs, renovations, and maintenance, and indicates whether we should repair, renovate, or replace the building. This has been a challenging topic for our board for a long time as we consider expensive repairs to old schools. The work group is asking for continued cooperation between the three boards and for the county to start researching alternative funding sources for the school buildings. It's a lot of money, and we are asking the county to start looking for ways to fund it. The work group also asked the county staff to look at updating the SAFO ordinance to better project school capacity. So please, take a look at the report, read it, it's worth it. Bring questions. If you have questions for Carrie or I, bring them, or bring them to the joint meeting, but it's really been a great process. Carrie, you have anything you want to add?
I did want to add just a couple of things, if I could use that as my time. I also really appreciate Commissioner Hamilton, who brought this forward and chaired the group, and Bonnie, who vice chaired the group, and also Mr. Abilay for his leadership engagement insights. We really had robust discussion each time. It's just six pages that really summarizes everything out of the 100-page document. And the page at the very back, the last appendix, is the list of all the buildings in the two districts with the years that they're built, so it's really interesting. Just to highlight, Bonnie mentioned the $500 million need for total school capital across districts right now. That gap has grown between need and the funding that's available. So in 2016, the need was 232 million, and we were just about 100 million short with our general obligation bond, and that gap has grown. One reason for that, as explained in the report, is the state has no longer issued like a 10-year bond. It's been 25 years. And so we really have funding based on available funds that the county designates available to us rather than need. And so this facility index, it's a ratio, if you like ratios, it's cost of maintenance versus, over the cost of replacement. And the larger it gets, the more it indicates that buildings need to be replaced, so it could be a really useful advocacy tool as we advocate for buildings in our district that need to be replaced.
Andre. Sarah.
I missed our last meeting, which was, so I haven't had a chance since the start of the school year to just say thank you and congratulations to everyone on a successful start. The car rider lines and the bus, my daughter's gotten to school every day on time on the bus, thankfully, and just, just feeling a lot of gratitude for all the work that goes into the first few weeks of school. A number of people have left, which is too bad, but I just wanted to call out, you know, I'm an Orange Middle School athletics parent and have really appreciated all the work that the coaches and the team there have done to like get athletics started, office hours to fill out the new software, just really getting messages from the team over the weekend as they're working to do things. So just really appreciate that. And then the other thing that I just wanted to share as sort of an example, we're going to talk about the student growth later in today, but I just wanted to recognize, since we had like a lot of people associated with Orange, formerly Stanford here, that like just to take one example among our schools, Orange Middle School, out of 2,010 schools in the state who got a sort of a grade for their growth, which is like they're changing of trajectory, they're catching kids up, out of over more than 2,000 schools, they placed 23rd in the state for their growth in math. And, and so, you know, that's, a number of schools in the district have like really great results like that. You know, we look at the achievement results, but the growth, we'll talk about it later. It's just, that's how you catch kids up, is by growing them faster than they're expected to grow. And, and so seeing a number of our schools in the top in the state is excellent, and so I just want to, I'm excited to talk more about that and all the work needed to be done, but just wanted to thank everybody for a really successful start to the year from, from my perspective.
All right. Dr. Moore, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. I attended the AG kickoff at Orange High School. I really enjoyed the conversations with students, parents, and community members, and I'm really looking forward to hearing all the wonderful things when the students return back from the convention. And also, I'd like to add that Orange County schools, they did show some growth according to state data, what Sarah was referencing to. And I know there's still more work to be done, but I'd still like to thank every teacher, teacher assistants, support staff, students, and their families that played a role in that growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Anne.
Thank you. I, too, attended the AG kickoff for the year with Dr. Moore and Bonnie Hauser was there as well. We had a great time with the students, enjoyed talking with them, and they're very excited about their trip to Indianapolis. I would be remiss if I did not say something about the events at CW Stanford this week because I spent 10 years of my life at CW Stanford, now Orange Middle School. And to see the pictures and to hear the things that have gone on literally broke my heart. That school is very special to me and my family. My grandson is there now, but it's also special to the people who have come there for the last 55, 57 years. And I hope that we can have some resolution to this situation that happened there, but it never should have happened, and I'm sorry that it did. And I do feel sorry for the families, the students, some of which are grandparents now that had, had trophies in that case. And I hope that we can gather some of those up and get some of them back and do something to honor those people who have had their trophies in that case for the last 55 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. So I, I'll just build on that, since the question has come up, is that the board did not request that, nor did we have any knowledge of it. The superintendent is looking into it, and when we have the data and information, we will share it with the community, but we need to, we need to understand what happened. We need to understand why it happened and ensure it doesn't happen again. And until we have the information, it's hard for any of us to have any conversation about it till we have that data. And I know that we want to understand it, so I just wanted to say that out loud so everybody knows that that's why it's not on an agenda or you haven't seen any updates on it. We are looking into it, and I appreciate everybody's comments and all the calls and emails, you know, with the understanding that we are looking into this. So just a couple items for me. One is, board members, thank you for those who have responded about being voting delegates for the School Board Association Annual Conference. There's still a couple of spots open, so if you are interested, please let me know. Also, the fall conference, the Fall Law Conference is coming up. If you have not signed up, please do that. Our own attorney, Neil, will be presenting there as well. It's normally a good time to get a lot of good updates about legal issues and concerns, and it does count towards our required education that we have as elected officials. The only other thing I'd mention is, you know, making sure as we get to our committees, we do have some changes that we need to make on how we run them, and we're having a single meeting, and so for the community, we are really trying to look at how we can optimize our meetings and effectively use staff time. So we'll have a single day for committee meetings and running those, and they will be recorded. That's all I have. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Just a reminder that the minutes are removed. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modified personnel report?
Yes, motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes removed in the modified personnel report.
We have a second. All in favor? Dr. Moore?
Hi.
Thank you. All right. Consent agenda has, has passed. First item we have up is we did move the summer operations update to the top of the agenda, so our staff can get out of here a little quicker.
Good evening, Chair Atherton, Vice Chair Purcell, members of the board, Dr. Felder, all are watching on this evening's board meeting. Busy summer for our operations team. We want to provide some updates from three entities of our operations team this evening, starting with child nutrition, Mrs. Sarah Pitts.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for your time, as we had a very enjoyable summertime, and I can tell you, so did the students at the events that we were able to attend. Thank you. So the Summer Food Service Program provides nutritious meals to children and students who might otherwise go hungry, as it allows access to free meals to students and families who might be experiencing food insecurity. The Summer Food Service Program also provides the ability for our 10-month staff members with the Child Nutrition Program to be able to work if they so choose, as they otherwise, you know, wouldn't have the ability to over the summer. So this year, our Child Nutrition Services Program was able to employ 19 employees. So we had 19 employees who offered to work. We had one summer college intern, and we enjoyed the company of three CTE summer interns. And I can tell you that it was a blast to have them because they brought a whole lot more life, and I can tell you way more dancing, to the kitchen than there normally is. Plus, it just gave us a lot of insight, right? I am one of those people that I took all of the, I could, and just sponged everything from them. What do you like the menus? How can we help with the wellness program, right? I just kept bombarding them with questions. So we had a lot of fun. I think it turned in it. Yep. So this year, the program was able to serve 6,136 breakfasts, 9,573 lunches, and 295 snacks, which were all reimbursable through the USDA program. We also provided snacks for four Read to Achieve programs and two summer scholars programs. We operated and assisted 13 feeding sites, and all of our sites were eligible for either site or community eligibility, meaning that we did not charge for a single meal this summer. Our interns were able to host two enrichment activities, including a session celebrating Farm to Summer Week, which we allowed them to talk about North Carolina strawberries, and no, it wasn't strawberry season, but that was what they chose. So we talked about strawberries. We went out to the community garden at Eflin Community Center, and we had a lot of fun programs where we made butterflies out of strawberries. And we also did an event where we featured the Bookopoly event that our CNI group was hosting, and we featured activities that were relevant to the books that we were reading. We also partnered with No Kid Hungry and the Sheriff's Department to provide a lot of summer enrichment activities to our sites. So I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I know my staff had a blast. Again, we did a lot of dancing and celebrating, and we were able to bring a lot of fun activities to our families, and it was nice to be able to get out of the kitchen. I can tell you, a lot of staff did, and get out, A, to see our students again, and be able to get out in the community and see them, as it's been a while since we've been able to see a lot of smiling faces. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for that. Up next, from Maintenance, Mr. Nick Mancy.
Good evening, board chair and board and staff. Good to see everybody tonight. Wanted to give a summer update from Maintenance Department, and we had a super-successful summer. We have been busy, very, very busy, very fortunate and, let's see, hit a button here. There we go. Very fortunate in the projects that we're able to get completed this year. Feel really good about those. Our major projects listed on the abstract, Cameron River Park, Phase Two. First phase was done previously to increase all the HVAC mechanicals and multiple exterior renovations, but Phase Two predominantly focused on the lower hallway and having all the mechanicals removed. We were very, very close on time. We sweated this one out to the very last minute, but we're very fortunate in the fact that the company was able to supply our HVAC units on time, got the units in. So there are still a few small items that need to be completed. The exterior work is still going to continue through the fall. Herod Construction has worked with us very, very well on this project, and they're very, very much on top of their game. The remaining exterior materials all have suffered through delays from manufacturers but are on the way, and we should be completing that project by year end is the goal. Of course, weather permitting, we will be doing siding and windows, so some of the siding, weather will affect that greatly. Central Elementary, very, very successful on that exchange. We had a 60-plus-year-old switchgear that was operating for that school and supplying all the power, and it was time. Just not serviceable, not maintainable, but very critical to the infrastructure for the school. Working with Sid Associates and H.M. Kern, we were able to acquire the material months before summer. We had that sitting waiting at the maintenance warehouse until time for the work to begin, and we really crunched. Contractor actually came in nine days ahead of schedule, but having to work through final inspections and testing and loading the equipment and bringing the building back online pushed us right up to the limit there, but glad to say that one worked extremely well. And so those were the major projects for the summer, but we have included quite a list. I hope you're able to go to the bottom of the attachments section. There is an incredible list, AL Standback all the way through. It's just, when I look at the list, I'm very, very pleased of what we were able to accomplish. A big part of that work, Hank McKee's come on board with us this year. It's good to have an assistant on to help us improve scheduling and to reach out to more contractors and stay focused on projects, so that's been a huge assistance for our program this year, and I think that's about it. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mancy, and the work continues there, and you have to have an introduction as well, right? From Transportation, Mr. Larry Alber.
Good evening. Thank you for the adjustment for time here. I don't know if y'all, you know, everybody knows that we get up about 4 o'clock transportation get going here, so this time is very appreciated. Summer was a success for transportation as well. Sorry. Here we go. We, we, too, had two interns this summer to help us throughout the summer, and they were both, I mean, I could really stand up here and talk a long time about those, those two individuals. They were both there for the right reasons. One was more of an engineer mindset, and the other one liked to get dirty, and they both got all they wanted there. It was, we should cut anything. We showed them, showed them what we had, and they, they really enjoyed it. We showed them, showed them what we had, and they, they really enjoyed it. You know, formed a relationship, you know, and taught them some good stuff. I think they had a good time. So I can't wait for next year, if that's an opportunity again, that'll be, we'll be looking forward to it as well. The, the Transportation for summer went very well. Again, we did what we had to do with what we had to work with, but we made it happen. Everybody got to their programs on time, safely. Our drivers done a great job. We have a dedicated staff at Transportation from top to bottom. I can't say enough about what they do for, for the students in Orange County. So, like I said, there's a couple recommendations that we put in there for some Friday Transportation and just trying to critique some of it in the, you know, in the future. It's real helpful to have some of the buses sitting still a little bit more than we have in the past couple summers here. That's when we, we would literally top to bottom inside and out, we would find tooth comb and get them back ready for, for the upcoming years and give them tip-top shape. So every opportunity that we can to get them, get them sitting still so we can touch them is beneficial for everybody. We shared a little bit of data on the ridership over the summer. You can clearly see, you know, AM and PM during, during Monday through Thursday and stuff was high. Friday is still, is, is still crucial for these students to have somewhere to go as well. I'm not sure if the parents were taking them or what was going on Fridays, but we wasn't seeing them on the buses. So I figured that would be a good spot to try to maybe scale back a little bit and give us a little more time for our maintenance and things of that nature. But, other than that, I think the, the summer went real well. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say to everyone, it is fantastic to hear the CTE opportunities for our students, and I really hope we can bring them in to hear their perspectives from it, especially, you know, as we're starting this back up. I'm so excited to hear it and hear all the opportunities that they've been given. And to me, it gives them the opportunity to look at different careers and stay here in Orange County. Thank you. Sarah?
Patrick, where are you going to go? I wasn't sure if we were holding the questions for the end. My question's actually about child nutrition, but will we finish the whole presentation first?
I was just going to make a couple comments. So thank you all very much for your support, and I do want to say, behind the scenes, supporting all of us are all the great folks that work in operations that do the work day in and day out, sometimes seven days a week. Also want to thank our technology department, our curriculum instruction department, and all the other support areas. We really started planning for the summer in January last year, and there were many meetings, and really by April, we were well into planning, down to the finite details, to what technology supports, what nursing supports, what meal supports, what academic supports, individuals that were needed in order to plan out an effective summer. And the reason I mention that is because that planning going into the summer months was critical. And it was critical not only because the programs were successful and they operated as expected, but it allowed the team to prepare for this school year. And had we spent all summer long scrambling and trying to support summer programs, we wouldn't have had the ability to prepare for this school year. And so I just want to recognize, there's a lot of folks who are not here this evening who worked behind the scenes helping us be successful, and we're very proud, as you mentioned, Ms. Smiley, about how we were able to launch. But I do think that's to, a tribute to the planning that has gone into not only the summer program, but preparing for this school year so that we can improve. We, we know, you know, 10 days into this school year, areas that we're going to improve for next year, and we'll certainly put the work into it. But I just want to mention that, you know, we, we feel like the team has worked well together and that we've been able to provide a great service for our parents and our community over the summer months. Questions or comments for the team?
Go ahead, Sarah.
My question was for Ms. Pitts about the summer nutrition programs. It seemed, I was trying to recall pre-COVID, you know, what sort of the volume was, and I don't know if you happen to know off the top of your head. I know, I think that was before your time leading child nutrition.
We were right at the number. We had been, I think it was 18, 19 was the last official summer before COVID hit. I think 1920 is when it would have hit. We had more sites this year, and the number of meals we served was right on par with where we were before COVID.
That's great. And I just want to say, you all are doing incredible work, and I'm just very, I thought that point, Mr. Avili, about the advanced planning, so that then the summer can run smoothly, so that then you have time to plan the school. That's just, I know you all are taking that wisdom, but that, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Other comments?
I just, I just want to say that I truly appreciate everyone's role in operations. I've been able to see everyone, and I've been able to see the growth, and it is really amazing to see the young faces, the young new faces within the different roles in operations, and hopefully they'll stick around for a long time and be a great benefit to Orange County schools.
And one last comment for me. I just want to, you know, share that, you know, from the maintenance and all the improvements in the schools, you know, the proof is hearing from the teachers, talking about how bright it is in their room and how they, you know, had to turn down the air where they used to have to crank it, they would not, not even get close to being called and leaving the doors open, and, you know, the importance of that airflow, and especially with COVID and everything else going on. So, thank you so much. Transportation, amazing job. Nutrition, a quote that I've, I've read in the newspaper, it is not mine, but healthy food is the most important back-to-school supply, right? And that's a quote from the News of Orange from Linda Linkton from Porch, and it is. It is a critical need in our community, and the nutrition workers know every student in our schools. They know their numbers, they know their brothers, their sisters, their cousins, what they're doing this weekend. So we appreciate everything everybody's doing, and just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. Avili, for your leadership.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to say thank you to all of you. It's a never-ending job, and I know that. I've lived it with you for a while, and it, it never ends. There's always something, and you all have obviously been on top of it all summer long, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate that. Good job, well done.
All right, Dr. Moore, do you have any questions? Or comments?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the final budget approval.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here tonight to talk about the approval of the fiscal year 2023 budget. As we shared at the August 30th meeting, this budget includes a $440 per pupil increase in our local budget. It includes legislative salary increases of an average of 4.2% for our certified staff and a 4% increase for our classified staff. And additionally, another component is the removal of all languages surrounding waivers associated with enrollment increases or decreases that districts experienced during the COVID For your approval this evening is a budget of $110.5 million, not including our capital. Forty percent, 46% of this represents our state budget, 36% is our local budget, and 11% is our federal budget. Federal budget is, continues to be higher than in previous years as a result of the ESER funds that we still have available and are still expending. The last bucket of those funds does expire on September 30th of 2024. We have expended all of them except for that last bucket of ESER III funds that we have available until that time. In conclusion, the fund balance remains, as we have been continuing to talk about, as a result of not appropriating any additional fund balance for this fiscal year at this time. It is estimated that our unassigned fund balance will be approximately $4 million. Again, this is unaudited, but based upon what we have seen at this point in regards to the revenues that we have received, as well as what we have expended, we anticipate coming in at approximately a $4 million balance. The only thing that remains to be appropriated is those fund balance carryovers from previous board actions. Is there any questions?
Board members, any questions? I, I do have some. So one of the, the items that we had last year, and I know we did not bring forward this year, was there was a $200K allocated, I think through the ESER funds, to account for teachers and staff that are doing other work, and we utilize that when they were asked to cover a class. I, I do know that they have been asked to use comp time, and I've definitely got significant feedback on that, and I'd just like the board and to discuss about allocating some money to allow teachers to be compensated if they're being asked to do other things. So just wanted to get a feeling for the rest of the board, how they feel about that, or thoughts.
I mean, I'm just interested in hearing the staff's thoughts about that. I believe Dr. Felder already sent some information about why they'd made that change, so just would be interested to hear, just a reminder of the places where we are compensating staff for extra duties and places where we aren't, and if there's any restriction, you know, restrictions on ESER or things like that, holding us back from doing that.
Just for clarity, I believe you are referring to the additional stipend for when our certified staff are having to give up their planning periods.
Exactly.
Correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so, in looking at that and making the decision for that, there were several components to that. We know that COVID is still here, however, we have kind of are moving out of the phase of the quarantines, the state of emergency, all of those things that were in play when we were looking at last school year. Also, ESER dollars have to be specifically able to tie back to COVID, and as a result of the state of emergency ending, as well as the changes from the CDC and the quarantine guidelines, and this initiative actually cost $300,000 out of the ESER funds last year. We felt like it was the right decision at the time to not utilize those ESER funds because they're really not valid any longer as a result of these other items being, taking away. For the board to be able to make that decision, which you do have the opportunity and can do that, we would have to look at fund balance to the tune of, I would guess, at least $300,000 based upon previous years, last year's actual cost.
So just a question on that. If we are not seeing the magnitude of the teachers having to do that, wouldn't it be less?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
I could just add that it's still an unknown. I just want to put that out there. We really don't know, you know, what that will look like this year, so, yeah.
Maybe, could I suggest, maybe staff could look at that a little bit more, like the, the absence data that we are seeing and sort of the size that might be required here? I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking about, there have been a number of schools with clusters and where I know that there have been a number of, of staff cases, and so, understanding the real size of it might help us understand the real impact to the fund balance of doing it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Carrie?
So, we may be hearing some different things, but some of what I've heard is some of the demand for the planning period coverage is really like vacancies versus people out sick this year. And so, that connects a little bit with what Ms. Rath was saying about, it may not connect directly to COVID causes. And so, I know I had asked Dr. Felder about this recently, like when, when does someone covering a planning period for someone else, when can they have extra funds? So I don't know if everyone has that same information we had in conversation.
Yes, and so, so not from ESER funds, but we can certainly compensate when it is more than, more long-term. And so, if it's covering a class, that's one thing on one day, but if it's a week of covering, then we would assign a temporary terminating contract, and that's what we've done previously, so.
Bonnie?
I just have a, it's an interpretive question on when, if we're covering another teacher, you know, is, is one of the express uses of ESER for learning recovery, and would teachers helping with covering each other's planning period be in support of helping learning recovery? It's an interpretive question.
It is, and it's a good question. It is interpretive, and also just keeping in mind the other items that we had planned in that ESER plan, and being able to carry forth with those items, can, this would also impact the ability to do that.
So competing other, other uses, planned uses of the ESER money. Got it. Thank you.
I would be willing to consider a fund balance on this, because the teachers and the climate is still very fluid. I mean, we have a lot of teachers that are covering, we have lots, we have several positions that we don't have teachers for, we have substitutes, but I would, I personally would entertain a proposal, not tonight, but to come back with one, to see what the options are for, if others are willing to, to do that as well. Okay, we have consensus? All right. The, the other question, I have just two others, Ford, so please bear with me. One of the other items that had come up that Andre had brought up was municipal funding, and I know that through an education class, there is an actual statute that allows that, where we could go to Hillsborough and ask them for funding or other means, but Neil, do you have any perspective on doing that, or?
Sorry, can you rephrase that?
The municipal funding that's?
I'm aware of the statute, so do you have a particular question about it?
Yeah, are you aware of any district that's approached that, or have?
I don't personally know any, I don't have clients that I'm aware of that have pursued it, but it is there, it's an option. So I can address some, any specific questions about how the law works.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I think something that feels tricky about that is, I, I think the vast majority of our students, I don't know, a vast majority, I think a large number of our students live outside of the town of Hillsborough, and so that feels tricky in terms of them agreeing to something like that.
The, the law does address, there's, there's two scenarios. One is if the, if the school is located within the municipal boundaries, and the other's if it is not, but serves some children who do live within the municipality. So either way can work. It's, it's an, the statute basically gives the municipality the ability to, to provide additional revenues, it doesn't require them to. The obligations fall to the counties for, for local funding, but, but it, but it is possible to have a conversation about that, and municipalities can chip in.
Yeah, in fact, during the, the class, I just have a screenshot of it, and it says, for outside municipality limits, they can provide a per pupil if they wanted to.
Correct.
So, and, and I, I know other board members have requested thoughts around maybe some concessions on the water cost versus maybe a direct funding like this, instead of charging out-of-town rates, maybe an in-town rate, for example. But I, I just wanted to make sure, because Andre, I know you brought this up, and I definitely didn't want to not have the discussion, if there's interest across the board to get ideas from staff around something we may want to propose to them. The only thing they could do is say no. Bonnie?
I'll just add that if, and I don't know where the project is, but at one point, Hillsborough did want to run a sewer line through the Cameron Park campus, and there's a question about can we negotiate for in-town sewer rates for our campuses in exchange? So it gives us a little bit of negotiating leverage, so it's not asking them for money. So it gives us a little bit of negotiating leverage, so it's not asking them for money, but asking them for a concession in our fees. But it's, you know, is that, is that coming back to us in the near future?
It'll come back. Sarah?
Can someone remind me that, I'm very concerned, I continue to be very concerned about not approving the federal funds, I forget the title of the position, the director of overseeing federal funding?
Federal Programs Director.
Yes, ma'am. I continue to be concerned that we didn't approve that position. What is the timeline for bringing that back to the board?
October 12th.
Yes. Okay. I just want to state that I continue to be in strong support of that position as soon as possible.
All right, any other questions, comments around municipality? All right, and?
Can I, can I just, to Sarah's point, is that position in this budget?
No.
Okay. Just, just checking. Okay.
Yep.
All right, and just the last point on this topic was our letter to the county. Dr. Felder had drafted a letter, was there any feedback or concerns, or can we move forward with the draft?
Yeah.
Dr. Moore, are you okay with the current draft for the county commissioners?
Yes, I'm willing to work with you to draft the letter.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Moore. That's all I had, and with that, do we have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Do we state more clearly what the motion is?
Move to approve the final budget for the district.
I have a second from Ms. Purcell.
Second. To approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Sorry.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the bond project change order requests for mechanical systems.
All right, so I'm back again. We have with us this evening Nick Mensey, Director of Maintenance, and we also have Ish Sood with Sood Associates here with us, who's been the principal engineer of the, of the projects we'll be talking about this evening, so we want to recognize both of them, and they're here to answer questions if you have any. So this evening, we're asking for a change order in reference to the design for mechanical systems. What you have on your screen here is, we have seven projects listed that remain within the bond. Orange High School was completed separately with the geothermal project, and so these seven projects are still remaining ongoing. Nick talked a little bit about the River Park project. That project is being completed, the mechanical design and renovations through mostly architects, and so the remaining six schools are what Mr. Sood has on his contract for the mechanical designs for older buildings at Central Elementary School, AL Standback Middle School, New Hope Elementary, Grady Brown, Eflin Cheeks, and Hillsborough. And so those are the six projects we'll be discussing in more detail this evening. So as part of the mechanical system upgrades, three of the projects that have been in development and have been ongoing for design was Central Elementary School. That was the one that the bids were rejected on based on the cost associated with what we would call pandemic inflation. And so those, there was some redesign, and as Nick said, additional work for the electrical components and fire alarm systems, and that is scheduled right now to be rebid, coming up here this week with a pre-bid, and then a bid opening on October 11th, followed by Eflin Cheeks Global, the design is complete on that one. That would be for pre-bid on the 29th, and then the bid opening on October 20th, and then AL Standback, that design is getting wrapped up and finished up, and then we'll have that out for bid. And so then that leaves three additional projects for Grady A. Brown, Hillsborough Elementary School, and New Hope. Part of the New Hope project was being completed through the Department of Public Instruction, so a few of those units have been replaced on that campus, but with the school over 25 years in age, it's time to do some more upgrades on that campus. And so it's just a, working with the design project, and then having some design changes, and then some rebids in the project. We do have a request this evening for $270,000 that is within the design contract with Mr. Sood's associates on the projects, and what we have before you is, on the left-hand side, the bond dollars that were allocated for the three projects that are gone through design, and then the, just the estimated cost of the construction administration for the projects, and so we have the estimates there with the cost estimates, but again, we won't know the final cost of those until the bids come in, and then the way the design contract works is there's a percentage of that that goes back to the design and the oversight of the projects based on the cost of the project. And so once we have the rebids in, then we'll have a better idea as to what the final numbers are, but at this time, we do know we have services that are requesting a change order of $270,000, and wanted to bring that before you this evening, but also give you an opportunity to talk with individuals that are close with the projects, and if you have any questions about the direction of the three projects, Central, Eflin Cheeks, and AL Standback that are currently under design, and then the three projects that remain at Grady Brown, Hillsborough Elementary School, and New Hope, and we would like to have those completed within the next six months to bid, and so Ish and Nick, if you want to come up and just kind of talk about where we are with the projects that we have listed here in the bids, and then the, having the other three projects completed within the next six months.
You want to take one? Go ahead, no, you go ahead. Who brought you out?
Just wanted to mention that Central Elementary was bid last year, but you know, there was a lot of shortage on the staff on your side, you were unable to award the contract, you know, so now we are rebidding it again. Eflin Cheeks is ready to be bid, so these are ready to go, you know, and they're already, and the design on Standback requires just a little bit more work, and that will be ready to go, so these three schools should be ready to go, and we expect that you will need a total construction budget of about $13.5 million for these three schools, which is, you know, an increase from the bond funding you had for six schools, but you know, the, it was some time ago, and there were some changes, not really changes, but the original cost estimates may not have been as robustly done. And our central budget is actually benchmarked, our budget reasonably checked out with what the bid was, although we didn't award the contract, you know, but, but it's reasonably checked out, so I guess I'll just answer questions, I don't know, I don't have much to add on my side.
Questions? Bonnie?
I have a couple things. I'm sorry.
Can I just add one thing quickly? So these are mechanical upgrades. These are going in and removing aged and failing equipment, pumps, motors, piping, HVAC units, controls for those units, so that we can have things like dehumidification, we can monitor fresh air in the building, check airflow, provide temperature control in the building, create zoned areas in the building. So this is complete mechanical upfits for these, which are items that we are sorely lacking in, in some of these facilities, just due to the age. This equipment's just at end of life, it is, we fight with it and struggle with it and repair it, and love on it the best we can as a district, but it's time, so.
All right, Bonnie?
Yeah, no, no, no question about that, so let me ask a couple of questions, and first one is really for Patrick, because we had a special meeting last week to approve the grants from the state, and is, so it's, you know, how does, can you just connect the dots between that and this?
Yeah, so that's, that's a great point. So here we're showing our total bond funds for these three projects being at 7.66 million, and a CCAP estimate with construction for mechanicals at 13.5 billion. And so we asked the state, there was a needs-based grant that we found out we were eligible for, and so two of our Title I schools, Central Elementary and Eflin Cheeks, we asked the state for an additional $11 million to help supplement these projects, and as Nick mentioned with River Park, with the older school facilities, when we go in and we're replacing and taking out mechanical systems, you're really destroying the classrooms, ceilings have to come out, lights need to be upgraded, there are some fire code things that have to be done, ceiling tiles, floor tiles, painting, and so it's an opportunity while these rooms are closed down to go ahead and do some of the desperately needed inside renovations, and so that's part of our projects as well. What you're seeing here is just the mechanical portion, and so utilizing the DPI funding will help us, because with this gap, if we don't bridge the funding gap, then we don't get to the other three projects that are still on the list. And so by having the additional funding from the state, it allows us to cover the gap for these projects, but also get the Phase II renovations, which is all of our inside renovations and repairs, but it gets us to get the three projects, which is the goal, to make sure we get all six schools remaining on that list completed.
Okay, great.
And we also, with that, there is, as we mentioned before, there was $12 million older school supplemental deferred maintenance from the county, and we still have approximately $7 million that we're holding for these projects as well.
Great, super, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Carrie had a question.
I kind of had a funding relating question too, and so just to, so we're talking about, so that's an, an overage that we're talking about, the grant helping to alleviate, but we don't know yet if we got it, right?
We do not.
And then in this action item that we're, that's being asked of the board, it's like a 270,000 overage that we need to cover, and could, could you just explain, you're not asking for new funds, though, you're basically using, where did it go, my financial piece here, from supplemental deferred maintenance? So what, is there something else that we're not going to be able to do, because we're going to need this 270 for this?
Well, not, not at this point that we're aware of. Again, you know, we're all hesitating and waiting on bids, we feel like the bid climate is certainly better now than it was last year, and as Nick mentioned, supplies and labor markets certainly are changing as well, but once the bids come in, then we'll know where we are with construction and where we are with gaps in funding and pulling any of our capital reserves, or any of our supplemental deferred maintenance, and any other capital funds that we've had or held the last several years in order to get these projects completed. So I would like to be optimistic and say we'll hit the targets, but I really just don't know until we get the bids in, so that we can plan those out, which I think is, to Ms. Hauser's question earlier to me, was, you know, how soon can we get the other three projects completed and moving on? And as soon as we know the funding revenue streams and where we stand on these projects, then we'll be able to move forward on those, because we'll be able to balance and know exactly where we are with our funding. But our goal would be to have Ish finish the contracted work for the design of those schools and get those to bid. Six months would be the target, and you have the capacity to complete that and do that? Okay, just want to ask the question out loud, so.
All right, Bonnie?
Yeah, I just, just to build on what you're saying, so it's six months for the design and engineering work, not, so, any sense of when the projects are going to be done? You know, when, when will the folks at Eflin and Central and Standback be able to say, to change their temperatures at different parts of the building, because they've been waiting a long time?
So it's about two years from the, from the, these are all multi-phase projects, and Ms. Purcell, I will just reminisce with her for a few minutes, I think her HVAC upgrade on her campus took seven years. Now, we're not talking about a seven-year project here, but with schools in session and with renovations happening, we utilized the plan at Orange High School to bring in mobile units, close down wings at a time, that is our same plan at Eflin Cheeks. We're limited at Central with the ability to do that, but we have done some adjustments to the students on the campus, especially with pre-K, so to free us up some space so we can move with construction, but that will help us, and Grady Brown will do the same thing with mobile units, so that'll help us being able to close and allow the contractors not trying to do this in the summer, but being able to work 365 and turn sections of the building over to them continually, and so that certainly speeds up and helps us with that, as long as, like Nick said, you know, we utilize the process of storing and housing equipment if we need to, or warehousing, just so that we can, when they're ready to work, the materials are here, ready to go, so I think that will be beneficial to us, but the, the one thing I would say is, every designer and architect and engineer, there's, there's two entities they have to work with, local inspections, building and planning, and then DPI. These projects, because of the nature and the renovations on school campuses, do require DPI approval, and they are severely short-staffed as well, and so, you know, we try to get the projects up to them, and then any comments that come back, get those resolved quickly, because we know, you know, if we let, let it sit at DPI too long, then it might be a while before they come back to resolve our issues, so, but we do have two other entities we work through. It's not just the architect designer comes back to the owner and says, hey, you know, here's what we want to do, move forward, there's still other regulatory agencies that we have to work through.
I guess in the spirit of managing expectations, is there a way to, to give us a long-term phasing chart? You know, something that shows us, shows the two-year process and how it's going to phase out, and I realize it could slide and move around, but, but it helps to manage expectation, so, hey, we're going to approve all this money for the design work, but we're still years away from getting these projects done, is what I'm hearing, yes.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, and, and yes, we will. So once we have, once we have bids and the bids are accepted, then that's where we're able to line up the projects with the scope. I mean, it, it really depends, how much of the building are you turning over, you know, what's, you know, that the contractor can't come into, and that's where we've really talked about the number of mobile units that we're able to have available to us, or sections of the building we can turn over. That was, our summer planning was about, you know, we closed down a few schools this summer, just so that we could continue to work, and these buildings would, you know, I would not expect any summer programs in them, because we're going to be doing construction over the summer months, so it's really, once we have the bids, working through that, and then, yes, we absolutely will be able to provide the board and the schools a construction punch, or schedule that shows, you know, what we expect the phase ends and the different sections of construction would be.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions from any board members?
I have one more. The Eflin mobile units, will we be able to bring those in before, now, without waiting for them?
Yeah, we will, we're not waiting, so we're working on the specs of those, we're not waiting on the actual mechanical construction. I think we've talked through the need being there to go ahead and get those mobilized early, because we know once the mobile units come in, we have technology, furniture, fire alarm tie-ins, there, there's a tremendous amount of work to do once those units come on site, and so we're proceeding forward.
Wonderful. Motion.
You ready?
I'm ready. I'm ready now, thank you so much, Patrick.
So I just, I just have one, one question, and you know, I always ask this, so is the design to allow local control in each classroom to control their temperature?
So, yes, I can address that. So the classrooms all have a temperature range, each classroom will have a thermostat, that school is a little more complex, it has a different series of controls, but we'll leave that aside. So yes, there will be individual devices in the classroom with flexible change. That would be within DPI spec, which is a three to four degree swing based on what our district has.
swing based on what our district temperature is. There are some districts, there are some schools that you may not necessarily be able to see that. The devices are sensors, not necessarily a thermostat like we're used to in our house, but those, those degree changes are still available. So. And we try to operate with it. Reason, I mean, we know there are ends of buildings. If you have an end building and the doors are open or closing constantly outside your classroom, sun that's hitting the building certain times of the day heat up more than others. And so when we've had those cases or concerns, we've gone in and we've made adjustments for those rooms. And we'll continue to do that where necessary.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
One more small part of that, if I can. So some schools are very different. Eflin Cheeks actually has individual control per room, whereas AL Stand Back has a major component, an air handling unit that may be servicing many rooms. So you don't necessarily have the immediate control. For one space, they may average temperatures over spaces, but that still allows us to make that fluctuation.
All right. Thank you so much. Carrie?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Sud for coming out tonight. We've been hearing about your report for the past couple of years during COVID, and we're remote, and it's nice to see you in person. So thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. With that, do we have a motion?
So move, motion to approve?
Approve what?
The recommend, the superintendent's recommendation.
For?
To expand, to extend the contract by $270,000.
Change order, to prove the change order.
For the change. Thank you. Okay. To approve the change.
Change order, $270,000.
Does that work?
Second?
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Dr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all so much. Have a good night. All right. Next on our agenda, we have the facilities use request for reoccurring events, community events.
All right. And so I think this item, we did not have a slide deck for it, but just wanted to discuss, we've had the request, you've heard, in reference to recurring events within the community. Our standard has been to follow the board policy and facility use schedules and to apply those to community groups that fall under the use of the facility rental program. We have reviewed the request and we have looked at the request. I know that the attorney has reviewed their request as well. We do understand that the community has used the parking lot for many years without a payment. Although what we request is if the board waives for this one-time event due to not knowing about or not understanding that there was a change in the, the policy, that there's still be a requirement that complete an application and that the certificate of liability insurance is completed as well for this.
And I'll just add one point on the, the certificate of liability insurance. There, there is statutory immunity from liability for use of your outdoor, for outdoor school property for, for this type of use. So not terribly concerned about. And of course, insurance doesn't protect you from liability. The purpose of the liability insurance is to make sure if there is an injury, there's, that someone who's injured can be compensated. So that's just a protection for the general public, more so than for the board in this sense. But it is a general requirement for facility use.
Questions from the board?
Motion to approve the recommendation? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Moore?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. One part of this was also talking about the reoccurring part. So that addresses the immediate need. And the second one that's been talked about off and on, and I just want to make sure we, we have some discussion on this, is since there are two specific events that have been brought up recently, and they, I'm sure they'll be brought up in the future, is, you know, how do we as a board want to address these longer terms? Not necessarily tonight, but I know we've discussed looking at an MOU with some of the, the recommendations that were made tonight and some of the other events such as players that have, they've offered as well similar things that would be included in a MOU as part of a, an agreement, community agreement. Yeah. But just putting it out there to see what people's thoughts are around that.
This sounds like it could be a good topic for like the policy committee discussion. So I think that, that's my reaction to that. And in that, I'm not a member of that committee, but what I hope the committee would talk about is, and get legal advice about is, I'm concerned, I would like us to be able to treat groups as consistently as possible in policy. And so the idea of MOUs and like, who can get one? And the, the fact that the district is put in a position of deciding who can and can't get an MOU concerns me from a liability perspective. And so I am, I am in favor of having a very consistent policy and unclear about the parameters around the MOU. So I would love for the policy committee to talk about that aspect of it.
Yeah, just one clarity point. MOU is part of the policy. It is not, it is not something unique. It is.
I am, I am interested in the committee considering taking out that portion and just consistently applying a facility use policy. So.
All right. Others?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of on the opposite on that. You know, I feel like Orange County Schools, one of our superpowers, is our relationship with the community. And if there are community organizations that are committed to work with us, that have worked with us for many years, that I want to honor those relationships and build those relationships. So I, I'm interested in Orange Community Players. I'm interested in, in the Optimist Club. And I'm interested in others. If there are organizations that want to work with us, that can, that give great opportunities for our students and, and our faculty and our staff, as well as extends our reach into the community, I'm really interested in exploring more of that.
So just a brief comment from the attorney perspective here. I do think it, it's a good suggestion to queue this up for discussion with the policy committee, if for no other reason. What you just did this evening was to waive policy to, in order to, to allow an event to proceed without fees. So you, you may want to tweak your policy if this is something that you would want to do more than, you know, every now and then. And then all these issues could be discussed. I do think it is, it's worth thinking about fairness and consistency. You don't want to be, you know, run into a situation where someone says it's, it's the viewpoint of our group, or the identity of the leaders of our group, or something have led to us being treated differently. So avoiding that, it's, you know, policy is generally your best way to avoid those types of claims. You have a clearly written, carefully thought out policy, board members have input, staff have input, attorneys review. You know, we could maybe come up with something that would thread the needle on that sort of, of issue. So I think all, all good perspectives, but I do think it makes sense to, you know, set that up for a sort of orderly policy sort of discussion.
All right. Others? Anybody else? All right. We will put it in policy to move forward to the board. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have COVID-19 health and safety updates.
All right. So I'll be joined this evening with Sylvia Compton, our lead nurse, and wanted to bring a few updates to you this evening as we have launched the school year for our traditional schools. And then we continue with the successful opening of Hillsborough Elementary School as well. The goal continues to be the same. We want to keep our schools open to in-person learning for students five days a week. We want to keep our schools open to in-person learning five days a week. And so we follow the recommendations of the local health department. As we noted on the screen, you know, we also work very closely with guidance from the State Department of Health, the CDC, and we still collaborate with the ABC Science Collaborative as well in to follow safety protocols and best practices in order to make sure we're successful in that goal. And one of the items that you notice on the bottom of this slide is the Strong Schools Procedure for Response. Now, we talked about sunsetting of the Strong Schools Toolkit, but then on August 25th, we, we received the Procedures for Response to COVID-19 Cases. And that's how we treat cases when we have cases within the school environment. And so we'll talk, you know, where that information can be found. But that, that was guidance we received right before the opening of school. So hot off the press today, so I had to update the slide. The assembly's not been updated, but we are now in medium for Orange County, and it has been a long time coming. Although from the case counts, I mean, we're still having students report, and we're still having staff report positivity in cases. And remember that we have many individuals who live, staff members who live outside the county. And so just because we're medium in Orange County doesn't mean we're, we're not going to still continue to see cases. And so we continue to strongly recommend that individuals wear a mask. And so we also provide high filtration masks, both for staff and students. And this year, we are not doing the onsite weekly surveillance testing, but we do have at-home test kits available. And so if we do have symptomatic students during a school day, the school nurse is able to provide test kits to go home, and the same with our staff. And then when we have school breaks, it is our plan to send as many home test kits home with families. So as we approach with Hillsborough Elementary School, having a break coming up, we're going to send test, home test kits home with every student. As our traditional schools take off for the Thanksgiving holiday and the Christmas holiday, we anticipate doing the same thing, sending home test kits home. And so if individuals, while they're traveling or spending time with family, want to test, we would encourage folks to test prior to schools opening back up. And right now, we're receiving those for free, and the state is fulfilling the orders that we request. And so those are, those are coming through the state program. We do have our district dashboard that is up, and I will, we'll show some numbers here in a second for that. And then I want Sylvia to come up, and this is some of the new guidance, talks about, you know, how we're identifying clusters on the campus, and then what happens when individuals have symptoms or test positive. So Sylvia? She's the expert on these things.
Yay. Good evening, everyone. So as Patrick mentioned, there have been some updates, and it was just updated again on the 25th of August. The definition for cluster did change over the summer. They added a new definition for the cluster. So we still have the five or more cases that we can connect to each other, reasonable epidemiological connection. So mean, same classroom, same activities before, after school, and buses. Instead of looking back from person one to person two, 14 days apart, and then person two to person three, 14 days apart, which by then could add up to four weeks, they have now also shrunk that to 14 days total. So all people in that five cluster that can have a reasonable linkage must be positive within a 14-day total altogether. They're no longer separating that from person to person. They also added a new definition where 15 cases reported on any campus within a 14-day window. Again, we're not looking at from person A, B, or C, 14 days apart. It's everyone within a 14-day window. With that said, we have had a few clusters that have been reported from our local health department to our state. It has been with the new definition of the 15-plus cases reported on campus. The cases include students as well as staff. I know Patrick's going to talk about the dashboard, and I just want to put this out there, that the dashboard represents the number of cases reported to us on the campus, but only if that person was on campus during their contagious period. And I wanted to make that very clear, because if they were not on campus during their contagious period, then the health department does not include them in our cluster count. So it's not that we're trying to hide information, but there was no, no exposure there and no chance of that person infecting somebody else.
All right. So these are current numbers. We've been tracking since the beginning of the opening of schools. And you can see the student counts, and then the staff counts, and the total counts for each school. And as Sylvia mentioned, we have had schools that have approached the 15 or more unlinked cases on the campus. And so we have sent additional letters out to families, letting them know, and then again, recommending individuals' masks on the campus. And we still continue to work to make sure folks understand the strategies that we know work, you know, such as eating meals outdoors when we can, when weather permits, using ventilation, having the windows open on the school buses, having windows open when we can, increasing that airflow within, within the buildings, making sure that we're using the bottle fillers for water, et cetera, hand sanitizer, the high filtration mask. So all of the strategies that we used last year are still available to us, and we still continue to use those, but wanted to give you a brief update on the cases to date. And then this chart was developed, and we communicated this out, and really tried to take that guidance that came out on August 25th and simplify that, both for staff, but also for families. And so if you find yourself in one of three categories, either you've tested positive, or you have symptoms and you haven't tested, or you're on one of these campuses and it's announced that, you know, there's a cluster or a potential exposure there, then what does that mean? And so this helps kind of guide through the flow chart and the information, and we'll keep this updated. It's on our website, and we'll keep it updated to families if any guidance changes. So we'll communicate that out. But I, folks have, I think, been able to read this and flow through this a little bit better than the multitude in information that seemed to be changing every few days last year. And so that's really the information we have for you this evening. Wanted to give you an update and just know that our school nurses are working so very hard, not only on all of the duties of opening schools, but they're, even though we're not doing individual contact tracing to the magnitude we were last year, they're still doing contact tracing because that's how they're determining whether these cases are linked or not linked on a campus. And so we do want to recognize, you know, although we're not quarantining individuals who were, who had exposures, there are, you know, periods of isolation. And then there has been some confusion in the community about required masking. We are optional masking within the Orange County Schools, certainly strongly encouraging everyone to mask as well. But on the case scenarios there, when you look at someone that's tested positive, or someone with symptoms who hasn't tested, when they come back on day six, it is a required masking. And that's not the Orange County Schools that's determining that and making that. That's the health department following the state guidance and the CDC guidance. And so just want to recognize there are individuals who have tested positive, and when they come back on day six, as long as they're improving symptom, Sylvia will give you the whole, all the categories. So I won't try to do them all. But when they come back and they're eligible to come back, they are required to mask, day six through 10. And so folks have been, I think, a little confused about, you know, that required masking. But it's just those individuals who meet that criteria, because that's the criteria you get to come back under. If you, if you want to return on day six, then here's the criteria, and that is a required masking. Questions or comments for a beer, Sylvia?
Quick comment, which is, I just appreciate the clarity of this particular graphic. And the question I have, you know, we, I think it's not a question. I think it's sort of a request, which is, you know, we still have some families who are choosing to mask at school, and we do strongly recommend it right now. And, and yet their classes are, you know, choosing to go to the cafeteria to eat lunch. And so there's sort of no, no control that family can have over that time. And we got an email recently from someone whose child was not high-risk, but a family member was, and they were really, you know, and so they were continuing masking, and we're really concerned that they didn't have a lot of control over that. And I would just love for us to think creatively about whether there are ways for students who want to eat outside to provide some coverage for that, to give some opportunity for that, so that some students can do that if their classes are choosing not to. There, there are just very reasonable situations that people want to continue maintaining that safety. And it kind of goes out the window if you're eating together in the cafeteria. So. So I don't know if there's a creative solution that wanted to request that.
No, I mean, again, you know, that's sort of what the high school model looks like. You know, students have lunch period and lunch break. Some may be eating in the courtyard, some go outside, some eat inside. I mean, there is an opportunity. And so we would just need to discuss with principals and at the elementary and middle school level to see if that's an option and what that might look like.
Other comments?
I had a question first. Thanks for this, and thanks for putting the dashboard back up because I've been getting questions about that. So thank you for that. I was just curious about the day in the life. I'm sure, as Patrick said, your folks are working really hard, and I have no doubt about it. But I was wondering about the stress level, the resistance, the tension, and if people are kind of working more collaboratively with you and if it's a little bit less stressful than it. Tell me it's, I want to hear that it's less stressful than it was, but.
So let's look at the whole picture. We've had quite a few nurses retire. So we are filling positions. So we're working diligently with our veteran nurses, as I call us, to train our new nurses, which COVID does make that difficult to focus on school nursing. With that said, we are still also monitoring because we still have to exclude students and staff that are symptomatic. There are criterias, and I know it's in one of those. There's three different ways you can get back on campus. You don't have to stay out and isolate for the full five days. With that said, yes, that is challenging because that is not necessarily the case in our community or in other workforce areas. So it's just a reminder that, let people know that, yes, strong schools did sunset, but North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services did post the procedure and guidance on what to do with the COVID cases. So it's just a reminder to keep sending that out. There is still some negative feedback that we get back, but that's okay because we know at this time, there's not just COVID. There's also flu, there's strep throat going around right now. We have RSV going around. So even if it's not COVID, you're still symptomatic. We don't want you in the building. So even if it wasn't COVID, we'd still be calling you and saying, hey, please come pick up your kid or please follow up with the doctor. But with that said, the challenge really right now is orienting our nurses, focusing on school health, and then also managing COVID on the side.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you all so much. Next, we have the State Assessment and Education Value Add system with growth data.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Atherton and so our staff for making their way to the podium. Just want to state that now that state assessments have been officially released tonight, staff are going to share the 2021-2022 school accountability results. Staff will provide an overview of where our schools stand based on a series of snapshots that captured just some of the knowledge, skills, and abilities our staff have acquired over the last year. Before they begin, I believe it's worth noting that as recently as today, in Raleigh, State Superintendent Truitt, Catherine Truitt, and state education leaders have been actively exploring new ways to support student growth and assess student growth towards proficiency. But here's what we know. We know that end-of-grade and end-of-course testing will always show a small slice of what our students have learned. We know that the way those results are analyzed is at best a partial measure of our students' progress. But we also know that we can continuously improve how we help our students learn. And furthermore, we know that changes we brought before this board a year ago and more are yielding the kinds of fruits that we want our students to enjoy well into the future. So at this time, Dr. Denise Green, our chief academic officer, and her team, Dr. Chris Gammon, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Mrs. Amber Wilson, Executive Director of Literacy, will lead us in a bit of digging in to these data to help us learn what has worked and where we still see areas for improvement in service to our children. So thank you all for being here tonight. I hand the floor over to you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Felder. You've given part of our report here.
Oh, okay.
Well, good evening, Board Chairman, Mr. Atherton, and good evening, Vice Board Chair, Ms. Purcell, members of the Board of Education, and again, good evening, Superintendent Dr. Felder. Well, we are very excited to be here this evening and share with you the data from our end-of-year, our end-of-grade, and our end-of-course assessment for the 2021-2022 school year. And as Dr. Felder indicated here, our data, there are moments of pleasure and excitement that we want to celebrate. And as my team know, I like to say, hey, all right. And so when we see those moments of celebration, go right ahead and shout it out. And there are moments that also cause us to pause and wonder and dig a little deeper. Because when we look at data, that data point gives us that one moment in time of a student's progress. That data also does not define a student, nor does it define a school system. So as we look at data this evening, we're looking at data through many different lenses. We're looking at data through performance on the end-of-grade, end-of-course. We're looking at data as it compares over time. We're looking at data as it compares against county and against the state. And we're also looking at data as we disaggregate to see how we're doing as we are indeed trying to close the achievement gap among several groups. I'm very pleased to have with me members of an extraordinary team, Dr. Chris Gammon and Ms. Amber Wilson, who will also share with us some data. Now, being a part of curriculum and instruction, we're going to tell a story. And this story right here has many different parts. This story comes with numbers, as Dr. Gammon will be pleased about. And this story will begin with a prologue. And the prologue here comes from our State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Ms. Catherine Truitt. And she's already been mentioned by Dr. Felder. And she states that educators, students, and their families are to be commended for their focus and hard work during a challenging year. Students in schools in North Carolina faced the same hurdles last year as others across the nation. And I know that coming from another school system that we could take off Orange County schools and put another county in front of them, and we will have the same message because many school systems were faced with the same challenges coming out of the pandemic. They began the 2021-22 school year handicap by the year before, that for many was defined by remote instruction that proved to be less effective than in-person learning. Last year, too, was not without challenges with students and teachers' absence because of quarantines and other significant difficulties. "Last year's accountability results are really a testament to the resilience, dedication, and commitment of thousands of educators across the state," Truitt said. "They know, as I do, that we still have a steep hill to climb and that every step matters." So we say that not in defense of our data, but to note that indeed, there were challenges. And as we look at those challenges, it's important for us to see them as what we need to do to mitigate as we look at this year's plan. And as with any good story here, there's more to come in the series to follow. So this is only part one of our data story as we come to you throughout the year to give you updates on how our students are performing and how we are performing as a district. I want to also give credit to the North Carolina Department of Instruction. They assisted in the absence of our data, our Director of Accountability and Testing, in providing the slides that give the data this evening. I can talk data, I just cannot operate the right. Thank you, sir. All right. See, that's why I have them around. So noting the COVID impact timeline here. So going back to the 2018-19 school year, that was the last time that we, the tests were administered and the accountability results reported. So from that, you will see in 2019-20, the tests were waived, the accountability waived. 2020-21 year, the tests were administered, the accountability waived. And then last year was the first time since the 1819 year that tests were administered and the accountability results reported. And I will say that all aspects of the accountability piece were reported in the results. When we talk about the testing and accountability, it's really about the instructional core that matters. So earlier in the year, we talked about our branching minds. And noted here, and the important piece of the branching mind is a quote that I liberty to read. "Core instruction uses scientific research-based strategies implemented with integrity to emphasize grade-level standards. It incorporates academic behavior and social-emotional learning supports that are accessible to 100% of students." And that's a key piece of our foundation as we look at what are we doing to indeed address our achievement? And what are we doing to ensure that we are reaching 100% of our students here? Again, putting it in context of the data as we look at it. In the 2021 school year, schools continue to mitigate the impacts of COVID. And then we will continue to do that as we move forth in the 2022-23 school year, not using it as an excuse, but recognizing that it was a significant part of education. We learned a lot during that time. We also learned that we just could not just give students the technology and access to technology and expect that learning is going to take place. We have to indeed address that piece and look at how we are indeed doing instruction. So when we look at data, it's not only through the lens of student performance, but we also have to look at it through instructional practice. So as we look at professional development, we look at the curriculum and analyze how our instruction is impacting student achievement, how student and teacher practice is impacting student achievement and all aspects of the instructional program as we continue to analyze other data factors and other data points. Because again, it's not one data point that determines our success. It's multiple data points. When we begin to analyze this data and compare it against many different factors, and I'm going to give you a district overview. Thirteen of fourteen schools received school performance grades for the 21-22 school year. This Partnership Academy, you note, is on an alternative accountability formula. So they're not included in our data. When we break the data down and look at our school performance grade, we will see that we have two schools that scored B, five scored, received a C, five a D, and one an F. While we have moments to celebrate our performance, it also moments to pause and look what do we need to do as part of our school improvement plan? And we have begun to look at that, and you will hear more about that plan in the coming weeks. We have 10 of 13 eligible schools that exceeded the growth measure for the 21-22 school year that represent 77% of our schools. That is significant. If not the highest, it's one of the highest percentage in the state. So that is moments to celebrate, and that's a hey, all right. Right, team? Hey, all right. And seven of 13 eligible schools received federal designation of targeted support and improvement, TSI. We will also be talking about the NC Star School Improvement Process for many of our schools here as we look at the school improvement plan also very soon. To give you a little bit of context about this data, because it's important to note how this compares to our state. Of the schools included in the report, 42% of the schools measured, and we're talking about the schools in North Carolina, measured were considered low-performing, which means they earned a school performance grade of D or F. 35% of the schools were C schools, while 17... And it's all a part of the same one. Seven, thank you. 17% were B schools, and only 5 and 6 tenths percent being A school in the state of North Carolina. We also note that 42% of the schools designated as low-performing here compared to 22% before COVID. So you can see the impact here, not only on our students, but students across the state. 29 NC districts are designated as low-performing. 29 districts. And 464 NC schools are designated as recurring low-performing. Recurring low-performing. So this is across the state. And if you look at, listen to the news, the education news, it's across the nation. So we all have a lot of work to do. And we're not sitting back using our COVID as an excuse, but recognizing here that our students have indeed lost significant learning, and we, as educators, have to make it a priority in looking at many different ways and many different factors in closing the learning gap for all students. When we look at our 21-22 performance composite data, we're comparing Orange County schools with our state and looking at our groups, our disaggregated data by our groups here. And you will see in this display here, groups that exceeded the state are our Indigenous people, our foster care, our military-connected, and our not EDS groups. I'll pause and take note of the different groups and performance. When we look at our district performance composite data of all subjects and all groups here, with the exception of the Indigenous people group, all groups showed growth when we look at this data over time. And going back to 2016, here, two years prior to the pandemic. And going back to 2016, here, two years prior to the pandemic, to the 2021, 22 school year. When we begin to look at our end-of-grade overall proficiency data, you will see that North Carolina noted in the red bar and Orange County noted in the orange bar. We have three schools that exceeded the state average and the county average. And you will note the schools that are below the county and state average. And the next graph that shows the end-of-course overall grade level proficiency. We have one high school that is above the county, and the county is above the state average. The county being at 51 and nine tenths, and our state at 49 and nine tenths here in percent proficient. The following set of graphs here will note breakdown by the contents, math and reading, as well as our graduation, our ACT data. And my colleagues will share that information with you. And we're going to come back and talk about the so what? What is this all telling us? And what are we going to do about it? Okay?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Green, and good evening. Ms. Wilson and I are going to run through several slides, as Dr. Green noted, focusing on just our breakdown within math, ELA, and science. As you can see on this graph, our grades 3 through 5 math proficiency is at a level of 46%, which is three percentage points below the state average. You will notice that we do have some schools that are performing above the state average, as well as some that are performing below the state average.
On this slide, you have the EOG scores for third through fifth grade GLP, which is level 3, 4, and 5, grade level proficiency standard. North Carolina scored, I'm sorry, 48.4%. OCS is at 42.9, so there's, we're about 5.5% below the state. We did, though, have three schools that scored above the state and district average. And you can see the percent proficient, as well as comparisons here in the chart and the graph.
All right, our next slide, our grade level proficiency in fifth grade science is at 58% across our elementary schools, which is five percentage points below the state average. But again, you can see that we have several schools that are very close to that state and district average. They're on both sides. Our overall math proficiency at the middle grades, so this is grades 6 through 8, which did include this past year our three middle schools, as well as students from the online academy, is at 46%, similar to our grades 3 through 5, which is also three percentage points below the state average of 49%.
For sixth through eighth grade reading, grade level proficiency on the EOG, North Carolina scored at 48.4. OCS was at 42.9. We did have two schools that exceeded the state here. And you can see those percent proficient and kind of where they break out.
All right, so there definitely some celebrations for eighth grade science. Orange County Schools' grade level proficiency is approximately 70%. That's just shy of the state average. But you can see there across, we have multiple schools that are right there at the state average or above in our eighth grade science data. All right, high school biology, our end-of-course assessment. You'll see the grade level proficiency for the district is at 50.5%. That's just a couple of percentage points shy of the state average.
For EOCs and English 2, OCS scored above the state in this by 2.4%. So OCS is at 60.3, and North Carolina is at 57.9. And you can see the school that scored above the state, as well as where the others are in comparison.
All right, and our Math 1 proficiency. Again, this is taking into account students who are taking Math 1 at the high school level. Across the state, you'll notice that it is significantly lower than several of the other data points that we've shown you. It's down at 33%. Of Orange County Schools is just below that at 31%. And next, we have what is called Math Rigor. It's one of the seven components of the school performance measures. And we'll talk about those a little bit more specific or more in depth here in a minute. But our Math 3 data, as you can see here, OCS is at 60.5%, which is seven percentage points higher than the state average. And again, we'll dig in a little bit deeper on what that Math Rigor means. All right, so our ACT proficiency. The ACT is taken at least once in high school, generally by juniors, by their junior year. This slide, as you can see, reflects the percentage of students who scored a 17 on the ACT or higher, which signifies college or career readiness on the test. Historically, the ACT scores have been a bit higher in the 60s. But schools will be working to continue to refocus energy on this, where there had been some diminishment of students participating through the pandemic. Lastly, our graduation cohort rates here. You will see two different data sets. One is the four-year cohort rate, and one is the five-year. Orange County Schools' four-year cohort graduation rate is higher than the state average. The four-year graduation rate measures the percentage of students who enter as a ninth-grade cohort and graduate in four years. And so that data does go into the accountability model or measure. The five-year cohort graduation rate is also significant because it measures students who may have entered with that same cohort, but they did not necessarily finish within the four years. They could have taken an additional summer of credit recovery. And then they would have a percentage that lumps into that five-year cohort. But that five-year cohort does not equate into that four-year measure that goes into the overall accountability model. All right, so when calculating our school performance grades, and this can be kind of a weighty thing, but we're going to try to break it down and simplify it as best we can. So North Carolina's accountability model, at the high school level, it does measure seven different components. Ms. Wilson and I have touched on end-of-grade or end-of-course assessments being one of those components. Our student growth data, which we will mention here in a couple of minutes, is one of those components, as well as the ACT, our four-year graduation cohort, work keys assessments, our English learner progress. And then lastly, that Math Rigor, which we mentioned earlier, which is just that Math 3 data. So those seven components work together as a part of the North Carolina Accountability Model. And you'll see here, the first chunk of this is performance. So that performance is 80% of the pie. Okay, so how we measure this school performance is first, we look at the number of students who are meeting grade level proficiency in all of those seven categories at the high school level that we just mentioned. At the elementary and middle school level, it's only four of those components. Those components being our end-of-grade assessments, our student growth data, our English learner progress. And then I feel like I'm missing one. So if I figure that one out. So, but these pieces here, as far as the 80%, so this makes up 80% of this full pie. Once you then take student growth data and you factor that in, that growth data is an additional 20%. And what student growth data essentially is, is students are projected at the beginning of the year to score at a certain level. If they are able to meet or exceed that, that is definitely going to factor into the growth piece. And so those, when combined together, they do give you a school performance grade. And what we've tried to do on the next slide is show you just a specific breakdown. This is not with any of our given schools, but it's just with numbers, just so we can see how this breaks out. So what we just mentioned is when you take all of those factors that make up that school performance, which is the 80%, all right, and you multiply that by 80%. So let's say, for example, a school measures at 78 points. You then factor that, multiply it by 80%, you will get a 62. So that's kind of your level of proficiency across those seven different areas. You then add that to that growth data, which is from our EVAS model. That growth data, if it was at a 91%, you have to multiply that by that 20 percentage, and that gives you a number of 18. When you add those two together, the sum would be 80. And so you can see to the right in the graphic there that we have the different grade ranges, as well as the letter grades to the scale to the right. And so in this scenario, that would equate to the grade of B. So as far as EVAS is concerned, this is, again, the student growth data or teacher growth effectiveness here is called a value-added model. What you're seeing here is an example of a teacher's value-added model, just an example, over a multi-year trend. And it's important to note that within this EVAS, meeting growth is what you see there on that zero line in the middle. So essentially, that means when a student enters sixth grade, seventh grade, I'm using those hypothetically, they have an expected level of growth that they are going to reach. If they land there on that zero line, it means that they finished that one year of instruction at exactly where they were projected to be. When you start to move to the right of that, to that plus one, plus two, and higher, that means that the student has exceeded that expected growth. Once you get above that plus two, and you'll see the color code there turns to blue. If you stay within that zero to two range, you're still within that met growth. But you also notice that that green trends to the left side, which would be the negative on the x-axis as well. So that negative one and negative two also means that a student still remains within that window of meeting growth. A teacher, in this case, also still remains in that effectiveness window of meeting growth. When you get below that negative two, and it gets into that red area, that means that students have significantly underperformed against the projection that they had. And that would then go into the does-not-meet category. So looking back two slides before where we did that formula, and we kind of looked at the sum of how you add the 80 and 20 together. This is the actual slide of our school performance results. There's a ton to celebrate. And this was mentioned earlier this evening. We have multiple schools that have exceeded growth. You can see to the far right column there that the exceeding has been well above that plus two for many of our schools. But it's also important to note that even for a couple of the spaces where it's not met, they're in that negative two range, where if it's just slightly back to the right on that x-axis, and they're within that zero to negative two, then they would have fallen into the met growth category. So they're not far from that. Now, Dr. Green's going to come and talk about our next steps.
Thank you, sir. Thanks. So now is the so what of our story. And when we look at the data, what is the plan? How do we address the areas of concern? And also, how do we continue to show progress and continue the celebration? Because we learn also from our high achievers as we also look at moving the data of our schools that we do need to meet the achievement, meet proficiency. Growth is important. Growth is certainly noteworthy and what we want to celebrate. But getting to that proficiency is indeed the area that we are trying to work towards. Originally, this presentation would have followed the strategic plan, and that's why this slide is here, because you would have seen this. We would have talked about this piece because in our strategic plan, we have looked at a very aggressive approach to our student achievement. We've set a pretty high bar that we want to achieve. We think we can, we can make this. But it's going to take some work. All of us working together to try to achieve what we know our students can make and what we know our staff can produce here. So you will see in our strategic plan that we have a goal here of working toward that proficiency goal. We also have a goal that's looking at growth. We have a goal that's looking at the achievement gap of some of our groups here, as well as a goal that's looking at graduation rate. We're still modifying, we're still tweaking our goals here. But we know that the end result is going to be one that is going to stretch us because we know that our students, our staff, can perform. We know that there's the old adage goes, what gets monitored, gets done, gets measured. And so our plan, as we not only develop our goals and as we work with our schools collectively, as well as individually, there will be some intensive, modified work with individual schools that our support teams will be assisting. Our support teams will be looking at school improvement plans, guiding schools through their development of the plans, guiding through schools through the monitoring of their plans. Also, we'll be supporting through staff development and resources. When you look at, also on this page, you will see some of the KPIs that we will be coming back as I shared in our story. Our story is a series. We'll be coming back with more data to show the monitoring as we work toward the end result. We can't wait to the end of the year and look at the data. We have to stop, we have to make sure that we are monitoring data that gives us the end results and let us know where we are going. There shouldn't be a surprise to us, nor should it be a surprise to schools when they get their end-of-grade or end-of-course results. There should be indicators, markers along the way that gives them an indication of how students are performing. Last year, Orange County started looking at many indicators of what will help move the data point. They looked at the instructional core. They looked at the multi-tiered systems of support. They looked at student social emotional learning, and they looked at equity. Those were things they started last year. And they're seeing some of the fruits of that work. They recognize that we saw great things out of that, and we're continuing to focus on those areas. You will see the alignment of that in many ways in what we're looking at through the curriculum here, through our work in science of reading, through the work with ThinkCirca, through the work in building capacity. So it's not adding a lot on to, to the plate of our teachers and our work. It's not by any means right here abandoning what we see of good practices and good resources, but ensuring that we are indeed aligning the arrows here. So when, this year, when our teachers are in their professional learning communities here, it's important, I'm going to skip to this slide and come back. It's important that the conversations that they're taking, that they're having are talking about this here. What is it that they are teaching? How are they teaching? How will they know when students have learned? These essential questions. How will we respond if students don't learn? How will we extend learning for students who've mastered? And who are we teaching? Those are the key questions that we will be listening for in those conversations. Those will be the key questions that our solution tree coaches will be guiding our PLCs with. Those are the key questions that will guide their planning. And those are the key questions that will be a part of their data. that will be a part of their data analysis. And we feel that as they are responding, they're answering those questions, then we should continue to see the growth in our student performance. We will continue to see increase in the number of students that are reading proficiency, and we will continue the celebration. So when we go back and look at, it's all about the core, it's all about instruction. Effective interventions must be built on a solid foundation of effective core instruction. We cannot intervene our way out of the core instructional problem. This approach leads only to overtax intervention providers and diluted, ineffective intervention systems, and I'm reading this from a distance without my glasses, and practices over programs. That's our message, that's our core, and we think we're going to see achievement. Thank you. That ends our presentation. We'll pause for questions.
Questions? Sarah?
I have a couple of, thank you all so much for this, and especially for finding a resource from DPI to help you put together some of the charts when I know it was not a great, it was, yeah, it's a moment where you want to analyze data. A couple of things I wanted to point out. One was the ACT metric. You had noted that that had dropped. I just wanted to note, they kind of buried it in this accountability brief, but the bar changed, so they increased it from 17 to 19. And so the state and Orange County dropped, fewer students were meeting the 19 bar than the 17. So that is why it is lower. I mean, there may be other reasons. You talked at the beginning about the exceeding growth and that we might be, we are the, we have 28% of schools in North Carolina exceeded growth, 77% of our schools exceeded growth, like 28%, 77%. And the growth is what tells us whether kids are on a different trajectory, which they have to be to ever meet any of these proficiency goals. They have to be on a different trajectory. So just huge kudos to everyone. I've seen some of the schools sort of celebrating that with their staff, and I think that's so important. Everybody's been working so hard, you know? And, yeah, I mean, it translates like in math, I think three-through-eight math, this was off the top of my head, I think it, I think the state increased maybe nine percentage points, and we increased like 15, which is like, who's ever heard of that before? And the growth, I think if you look at that with an equity lens, I think we're among the top districts in the state for like every subgroup for growth. So I really, I hope that once we have more resources for the analysis, that we're able to dig into that and share some of that, because that matters. And two questions, I'm talking a lot, I apologize. The M-class results, Ms. Wilson, can we bring those back, the end-of-year M-class results? Because when you presented those, they weren't fully complete in student achievement, but then the state put theirs out, and I was like, we saw bigger growth than the state in M-class too, in the littlest ones, where you've put all that work with literacy.
There's definitely celebrations there, I'll be happy to bring that back.
Great, great. And then the graduation, I was confused about the five-year, how it could be a lower number than the four-year. I don't understand that logically.
Four-year and five-year?
I saw that our five-year graduation rate was lower than our four-year graduation rate, and I don't understand how that can math-wise work.
Yeah, so we have similar wonders. These were provided by the state. My assumption would be that that's factoring in like the percentage of students that did meet the four-year, and then sum out of that percentage, how many of them didn't end up finishing in five?
Mm-hmm.
So like if there is, and this is me, again, I would have to dig deeper into that, but if it lands at like a 90% in four years, and then you're looking at the other 10% that didn't finish of that percent, how many didn't finish in five? Does that make that?
Okay, sorry. I thought I was loud enough.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Sorry for taking so much time. That was longer than I anticipated.
Other questions?
Just a comment. I know we've just come through, you know, the past couple of years, it seems like we started out having to overhaul so many things, particularly like literacy curriculum, and it just, it's really great to see, you know, we saw some of that at the end of the year, like just the huge growth, especially in the younger grades. And it's really exciting to see, Sarah mentioned, like the middle school math starting to shoot up. And so all the groundwork that you all have been laying is starting to bear fruit. Really appreciate it.
So I'm not sure exactly how to say this, because of course, from the staff, the teachers' perspective and the students, you know, it's all about 500 teachers working with 7,000 students every single day, and the work they do is incredible. And so, and I can't imagine how, you can't imagine how appreciative I am of that. And the numbers are a tool for us to say, where can we help them be better, right? And what do they, what do they need from us? Because, you know, we all work for them, right? We all work for that, that little interaction that happened so many times. I have just a couple of questions. One is when they put the state averages together, the district averages together, do they weight it by the number of students in a school? So for example, Orange High School has 1,400 kids, Cedar Ridge has 1,000, Efflin versus Central. So, you know, are the numbers weighted, or is it just, I mean, how do they average, how do they, how do I get the district score as a composite of schools?
So I can speak to the 80%. It is a numerator-denominator, so it's like the amount of students that you have versus the amount that have actually scored proficient on the assessment. That's one piece. Now, the growth piece, I don't have specifics on if there's something within that algorithm that takes that into consideration.
Okay. And then my second, it's kind of two related questions, is I realize that you're the CNI folks, and you're, you know, bringing the core in, but I'm curious if we can take a look at how teacher attrition or teacher retention and working condition survey results are affecting the outcomes. That certainly is an important piece, because when we look at data, it's not only around, you know, student performance, it's also the instructional piece, the teacher piece, and so that data is also the curriculum and looking at standards. So that's, thank you for noting that.
Yeah, and I would even say, like with the comprehensive needs assessment, when you're thinking just of like the Title I schools, for example, like part of that process, you have to factor in teacher working condition surveys, because that helps to focus decisions that you make with your funds about where you would want to place money in those decisions. And that teacher working condition is a part of the data that goes in, along with all the data pieces that you've seen here.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much for digging into the details, and definitely looking forward to the discussions on each of these. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And our last and final agenda item, we have approximately 10 minutes, hopefully less, on the school profiles. I do know we gathered data prior to the meeting and got input from different board members.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring an update. Several questions, you know, as we think about, well, I'm not sure, but let me see if we can catch back up here. So, you know, there were a few things we wanted to just bring and point out this evening. One of those is thinking about what do we want on a school profile to report, and was just mentioned, you know, one of the linking factors was bringing in teacher working condition survey along with the North Carolina school report card. So there's already two data sources out there, just as you were mentioning, and how we can monitor and review those without trying to recreate the data sources. And so can we create a school profile that gives the data narrative about a school, but what other critical components does the board want to see in that, such as specific school programming? You know, programs and opportunities for families, looking at the growth plans, you know, we have the data that tells what's happening in the school, but what are the plans for how we're going to grow students? Link to school improvement plans, and then some of you made comments on, you know, can we link in facilities data, you know, long-term capital projects, renovations, repairs, because when we look at the teacher working condition survey, we know there's a direct link there, and we know with student learning environments, there is a direct link there as well. And so just a couple other points, as we think about this topic, is, you know, is this going to be a project that's going to be in-house, or is this going to be a project that we'll contract out, and we're very concerned about the capacity we have in order to do these school profiles? And then at what intervals will data be updated? Is this something you're, like our dashboard for COVID, that, you know, is the expectation to have it constantly monitored and data updated, or is this something that would be, you know, on an annual basis, reported out, and families in the community would be able to see the data for the school profile, you know, from the previous year? Except for there may be some other, you know, school initiatives or school celebrations that may want to be updated. And so I think, you know, those were the discussion points from the administration we thought we would bring, not necessarily getting into every data piece you would like to see on a profile this evening, but, you know, what process do we want to take to accomplish this? And are there, you know, critical components that you feel help inform the process? So, Dr. Felder, is there anything else going in?
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Bonnie, you're calling on me first.
Oh, you.
No, I do have a few.
I'll just, just a couple, and I'm sure I'll have more, but people are getting data about our schools, but they're not necessarily getting it from us. And some of it's old, some of it, you know, it's like all over the place. So I would rather, I would like to see us begin to control the information that is reported publicly about our schools. So that's one of my things. Secondly, is, I don't know if you saw this, but DPI is using a new dashboard tool called Tableau, and I think it is, it's considered really powerful. And, you know, this should be, you know, there's different levels, you know, I can see stratifications of things that we share publicly, things that you share with the board, and things that you use, that the staff uses to manage, you know, manage the operation of the business. Because our, as you know, our systems are, as old, you know, our information systems are not really designed to manage a school district, they're designed for accounting and kind of old ways of doing business. So to the extent that we could put a management overlay using data around our schools and students, that becomes very powerful for us. So again, with Tableau is great, and, you know, so just some general thoughts.
Sarah?
I was so distracted by what Bonnie was saying that now I forget what I was going to say. But the other thing that I would add to your list of working conditions and the report cards is the reporting system that the state put out for the state test results this year, because, and I think what's tricky is, you know, you have to kind of be fluent enough to know where to click. That's what I'm thinking about, about going straight out to these sources. But it does have, for example, for any one school, all of the data back to 2016 in a graph, you know, and then with the break for COVID, and then you can see what's happened the past couple of years. So it has some, it's all right there, you can filter by all the subgroups and everything. So I would add that one. You know, I really love the idea theoretically of having great profiles and dashboards, using, I mean, something like Tableau is amazing. We don't have those capabilities inside, and in terms of, our money is very tight right now, and so that's, I think it's important for us to get to the essentials of right now, and whether there's a way to do it in a cost-effective way.
Sure, go ahead. I have done work with report card data, and I got an intern out of the business school, and they just put this together in a snap, you know? So I just wonder, and Rhonda and I have talked about the idea of getting an MBA intern, or potentially even going to the business school and seeing if they'll do a project for us. But this is, they're great at it, they work with data like crazy, so I just wonder if we might go to the business school to get help with this.
That is a great idea, and there may be other programs in public administration. There are lots of programs where the students learn how to use functionality like Tableau as sort of part of their education, and it can be a great capstone project or something.
It's an interesting project, interesting.
Yeah, it really is.
And I'll just add a couple of comments. I know some of your comments were about the format and updating, and clearly, if this is going to be something that we're going to move forward, clearly, this would need to be in a database that people can update once a year versus somebody creating it. And that's where Tableau or even Power BI, Power BI is what I'm used to seeing, and it's very easy to use, lots of people have access. And guess what? If it's in a database, it doesn't matter. You can use any of those tools. And I think one of the key things that I learned with talking to the different board members was being able to go to a specific school and seeing the trend, and as we see the improvement plans, how is that affecting the specific different areas of the school? And trying to understand where the school's been and where it's going. And so I, you know, for me, having that database and being able to look into that data is really important. And I don't think anybody I spoke to was thinking that necessarily the staff was going to do this, but, you know, I really like Bonnie's idea of trying to look at pulling in others to help, and whether that's a CTE project or another group, and I'm definitely personally open to any of that. All right, we have two minutes left. Any other comments? Dr. Moore, do you have any comments?
No, no comments. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other comments, shall we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Moore, thank you. Opposed? We are adjourned.